No, I don't choose.
No, aren't you?
Oh, no.
I have a cell phone number.
I do.
So we are live and streaming according to Drew. So I guess I'm going to call the city council to order. This is a joint study session between the city council and the county commissioners. It is Thursday, June 16th. And there's Laura. So this is a study session. There is no public comment. We're, we have several agenda items, economic development, homelessness, and our inter local agreement. So. So welcome Laura.
Thank you.
City councils called for ordering. Point your posts to order whatever you need to do.
Well, I think we're doing a meeting where.
So we'll turn it over for tip strategies. Is that?
So I will start us out. I am here in St. Louis, city manager of the state of Oklahoma. Welcome, and it's an honor to be here. And Commissioner Wright can add in. Councilmember Taff can weigh in here. We have been serving as the steering committee for a joint countywide strategic plan for economic development. And the city of County have host or have actually funded half and half the study process. And it was kicked off this last fall. And we have some folks here tonight from Tip Strategies who have been our consultants on board to update you all about some of the actions that have happened so far, some of the findings and our next steps. And so just to bring you all along on the process. And so they have about a 20 minute presentation, I believe, and then the opportunity for questions as well. So I don't know if I'm sure right or.
This has been a very interesting process so far. Some of the findings were pretty, yeah, we know that. And some of them were somewhat surprising, especially when it came, I think, to community priorities around what our stakeholders are identifying as what they see as the first and most important steps towards bringing up our economic fortunes here. And we've got a good group so far. It was not, we purposely, in my mind, picked folks who are not the usual players in this, getting a much more diverse group of opinions. And I've been really pleased with their participation. And let's see where we go here next.
And just so folks are clear, this is, this is remains a work in progress. So, so as we're going through this, this really just to bring folks up to date on the information that's been gathered to this point, sort of the database, the underlying principles, or not principles, but the underlying data, not just the public input, so that we have an understanding and recognize that ultimately the outcome, we believe, will be a solid evidence and accountability that are articulated in a way that I don't believe that we have really worked with in historic. So to again, recognize that process, that this is still process, that it's, I feel like it's good, positive process. We've had, I think, great input. But we're not there yet.
With that, I would open it up to our team at Tip Strategies. And if you need some technical assistance, do you have the ability to screen share?
Looks like we do have the permission to screen share. Well, good effort, good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Marcel. I'm a senior partner with TIP Strategies. And thank you commissioners and council members for the opportunity to speak with you today. Today, I'm joined by our senior vice president of consulting, Alex Cook, as well as consultant with our team, Victoria Wilson. And the three of us have been the team that has been helping to facilitate this countywide economic development strategic plan. We're excited about providing you an update about the progress that has been made. And as, as you can see in front of you, we put together a slide deck to help guide our conversation this evening. It should take about 20 minutes. And then we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers. And if there's a question that you have that occurs to you later on, or a comment that you want to share with us, we are all ears. We would welcome an opportunity to have a longer conversation with you and work around your calendars to do that. This is the agenda that we'd like to cover this evening. First, I'd like to give you just a quick introduction to who TIP Strategies is, so you have a sense about who we are. And then I'll give you a quick overview about the scope of work, what, what the planning process is, looks like, and what's been done so far. Victoria is going to share with you some of the economic and demographic data and some of the progress that has been made with stakeholder engagement. And then we'll update you on the work that we have been doing with our steering committee. And that's under the leadership workshop, workshop component of tonight's conversation. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So with that, let's just do a quick introduction to who TIP Strategies is. TIP Strategies, it's actually an acronym and it stands for theory into practice. And that's because as a firm, we spend a lot of time trying to think through practical applications for economic development for communities. So we're very implementation focused as a firm. The firm itself is 26 years old. We've worked in over 350 communities around the country during that timeframe. And we have a lot of experience working in rural communities, urban communities, suburban communities, and helping them conduct the analysis as well as the strategic planning work that's, that they need to help guide their economies moving forward. Let me share with you the, the steering committee that we have that's serving as a part of this project. And I will tell you, it's been an outstanding group of leaders across the county that we've had the good fortune to work with. I won't introduce everyone, but I'm sure these names are all familiar to you. And I want to recognize their contributions. We do have a lot of work in front of us, but they have been fantastic members of the steering committee. And I really want to appreciate, say how much we've appreciated their, their contributions. So with that, let's talk a little bit about the project that we have underway. You'll see here the project goal. And the project goal is really straightforward, to develop some actionable strategies that will build upon the community strengths and focus on community collaboration and implementation. And there's a real strong focus on implementation as a part of this project. You'll hear me talk about that in just a moment. I do want folks to appreciate this is a countywide plan. We're also going to be providing some specific recommendations to the city of Ellensburg as a part of this effort. And this is the timeframe that we have as a part of the project. It's a 10 month project. There's a lot of work that's going on and you'll see a lot of tasks that are being carried out through this timeframe. I won't share each, I won't take you through each one of the tasks, but I will tell you about the three phase planning model that we use. It's the discovery, opportunity, and implementation model. And during that discovery period for the first four months of the project, we spent a considerable amount of time gathering data, economic and demographic data. And Victoria will share that with you in just a moment. And then, but we've also been doing a lot of qualitative information gathering, learning and listening to community leaders in roundtables and one-on-one interviews. That's allowed us to come to the opportunity phase where we're in that opportunity phase now. This is where we're building out the framework for an economic development strategic plan, honing in on the focus areas that we want to capitalize on. And that will take us to the, at the tail end of the plan, the implementation phase. But I will share with you, there is an incredible prioritization about implementation as a part of this effort. At the conclusion of the plan in September, we're going to be conducting a workshop, a community-wide workshop to go work through the plan itself and work with community leaders to take them specifically through the strategies and the actions and the metrics associated with those that are determined at the end of the plan. But then we're also going to be coming back 90 days following and meeting with that same group to, to make sure that we're clear on what has to be, what's been accomplished over that first 90 days and what needs to happen to move even farther down the path. We'll come back six months following the conclusion of the plan and meet one more time with this entire group to make sure that the path of implementation is moving forward. And then we'll come back and out a year after the conclusion of the plan. So in a one-year anniversary, to talk about making refinements or adjustments and talk about the progress that has been made and what's in front of the community during this five-year economic development strategic plan that's been developed. So with that, I want to turn it over to Victoria to take you through some of the data that we pulled together.
Hi, good evening. First, I want to share with you this tool that our research team put together. They use Tableau to gather a bunch of data and analyze it. This is just a screenshot of that tool. Each one of these individual tabs is its own separate graphic with its own interactive capabilities. Some of these show data over the span of 20 years. Some of these compare data from Kinetas County to other neighboring counties and other communities, communities around the country. So it's a very, very powerful tool and there's a lot in it. But we're going to focus on just a few key takeaways that we got from, from this analysis.
And Victoria, let me highlight with the Economic Explorer, rather than giving all of you a static set of charts that I think a lot of folks are familiar with when they get a chance to see a presentation about economic and demographic data or industry data. What we've done is build a tool, it's a software tool that you can, you will have the ability to log into and work through all of those data sets that Victoria just referenced that will really help, it'll allow you to walk through all of the data that's been compiled. And it's, as I think you heard earlier from some of the steering committee members, there's some really interesting information that we've been able to pull together that I don't think has been pulled together for the county in the past. So I'm sorry, Victoria, go ahead.
No, no, you're good. And I should add also that our research team put this together in an online format. So there's a link that we've made available to the executive team. So it is, y'all can peruse it and, and really dive in. Here are some of the top or the main takeaways from this data. One is that the population in the county is growing and that's due mostly to domestic migration. This growth and of course, the pandemic is causing housing to become unaffordable in the county. A third of homeowners and half of renters are cost burdened. And we define cost burden as someone who pays over 30% of their income on housing expenses. There's also high vacancy rate in the county, which is probably not surprising to you all because you have a large stock of vacation homes in the area. Your top employers over the past 12 or so years have been the education industry, accommodation and food services, retail and healthcare. And another interesting finding for us was that more people commute out of the county than into the county. And I'll go into, I'll show you a couple of charts related to this in a second here. But first I wanted to share this chart with you. It shows net employment change for specific occupations. On the, on the left-hand side, you have the list of occupations. There's transportation at the top, healthcare. And then each of these bars represent years. So they're color coded by year and the larger the bar, the more jobs that are represented in it. And the orange bar at the, you see at the very end of the top here, that is the actual net number. Something that's interesting from this data is if you look at the very bottom, food preparation and food, I think it's, and serving is really small on my screen, I can't read it. But due to the pandemic, a lot of jobs were lost in the sector. And this isn't news. It was one of the most affected sectors across the board. But what's interesting is we also saw a big growth in transportation employment during that time. So there might have been some transfer of people going from one occupation to another. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. If I, this is just an image of the graph. If I had the tool to show you, I could hover over any of these bars and it would give you a lot more information. On the right-hand side, you can customize the year range and select different geographic areas also. This chart here is, shows commuting pattern. So let's focus on the one on the left first. The teal bar shows the number of people who are commuting into the county. And then the red, orange bar is showing the number of people who commute out of the county. And so as I mentioned earlier, more people are commuting out of the county than into the county. Something that was interesting when we dove a little deeper into this was that for those people who are coming into the county, there's a larger proportion of people with lower incomes, which kind of tells us that some of these people can't afford to live in the county. So they're living outside the county, but they're coming, commuting in for their jobs. And another interesting thing we found is that people who are commuting outside of the county, there's a larger proportion of people with higher incomes, suggesting that anyone looking for a certain income or job growth or career opportunities is looking outside the county for that. On the right-hand side here, you'll also see a chart that shows the number of people who live and work in the county. And this is a pretty big number as well. It's about 9,000 people. And this one here, there's a lot, a lot in it, but I just wanted to show it to you because it's a really cool chart. And also it kind of speaks to these commuting patterns a little bit more. This heat map, heat map here shows people who live in Kinetas County and where they work. And of course, you know, there's a lot of people who live in the county and work in the county. So you see that dark red right in the middle of county. But you also see a pretty dark red bubble in Yakima. And there's also quite a bit going on in Seattle, which also supports this idea that people are, with higher incomes are working outside of the county. And as we mentioned earlier, there's a lot of data here. There's a lot more to explore beyond what I'm showing you right now, but we could spend hours. So just showing you a few key points and hopefully you'll be able to look through the whole thing later.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that everyone has an opportunity. We'll share the link with all of you so that you get a chance to go through all of this. And there are literally dozens and dozens of data sets. And so you'll be able to drill down into any topic that you're looking for, any area of data that we pulled. We've, we've, we've searched far and wide for every piece of data that we can get our hands on, incorporated and folded into this data tool that will be at your disposal.
We also want to give you just a quick overview of what we did in terms of stakeholder engagement thus far and some of the things that we heard most frequently from the people we spoke to. We conducted about eight roundtables. They included various industries, including tourism, real estate, agriculture, manufacturing. And we conducted over 20 interviews, one-on-one with individuals in various spaces. We spoke to people who work at CWU. We spoke to people in energy and healthcare. So yeah, we've had a lot of conversations over the last few months. Some of the things that we heard the most were, well, one of the things we heard the most was that people who live in the county love living in the county. It's peaceful and beautiful and you really want to keep it that way. Something else that came up was that land use and management is should be a priority going forward. There's pressure on agricultural land from residential development. Forestry management is a concern when it comes to potential for wildfires. And of course, there's a critical need for housing. We also heard that the county central location really presents an opportunity. It's already, it's already key to hay exports. And of course, your proximity to Seattle is a really big advantage. And we think about location, we also need to think about the natural resources in the area. Snoqualmie Pass is really close by, plenty of opportunities for hiking and biking and all kinds of tourism. And some people have suggested that even building out businesses around recreation would be a really great opportunity for the county. And lastly, something that came up was that there's an opportunity to better unite the county. Government structures and local organizations are somewhat fragmented. So there's an opportunity to work a little better together. And similarly, CWU is a great asset in the community. But there's, that connection could really be strengthened between CWU and the community. And so after we did all this qualitative and quantitative, quantitative analysis, we put together, we held a leadership workshop. And the goal of this workshop was to, rather than put together a vision for economic development, which can often be all vague and honestly difficult to arrive to in terms of achieving consensus. We wanted to find what the core priorities and the pillars for the community were going to be moving, moving forward as we put together this plan. But before I share that with you, we also asked the people who attended, include the steering committee and a few people who attended roundtables and interviews. And we asked some questions about their vision for economic development. And this one in particular is regarding what people viewed as the priorities for the community. And as you see here, infrastructure investment by far was the most common or was a top priority for a lot of people. That being said, every one of these categories got several votes. So they all have some level of importance to the people who attended. But you see business retention and expansion up there, business recruitment, place making. So y'all have lots of things in mind when it comes to economic development for the county. And after, and as a result of this workshop that we conducted, we came up with kind of five key focus areas. And, and these are going to be almost like our compass for the plan. They're not strategies, they're not goals, but they are almost, yeah, they're, they're guiding principles and values by which we're going to, which we're going to follow with particular of the plan. The first one that we identified was resilience. And here we're talking mostly about workforce, workforce resilience, providing residents with the tools and the resources they need to access jobs and opportunities. And also supporting people who want to become entrepreneurs and start a business in the area. Collaboration is another important theme. Uniting the upper and lower county behind some common goals that benefit the community as a whole. The county as a whole is going to be really important. We heard a lot about growth. A lot of people are concerned that growth is getting out of hand. And while growth is going to happen, we came up with the idea of balanced growth that can help build a dynamic community, but that maintains an attractive, its attractiveness and is affordable for people to actually live in. Community investment, investment in infrastructure to meet current and future needs is going to be important to the plan. And lastly, preservation, you have a strong agricultural legacy. Natural assets and resources are a big part of the community and preserving those are going to be something that we keep in mind as we go forward. And that's a very high level summary of what we found up to this point. As Jeff mentioned, we concluded the discovery phase, we're in the opportunity phase right now. We're going through, looking at best practices at the moment, and we're starting to think through some initial strategies. We're actually traveling to Kinetas County in July. And we're going to be hosting an opportunity workshop. And the purpose of this workshop is going to be to present some initial ideas for strategies and get your feedback on them. So we're pretty excited about that. And once we do that, we start putting together a draft plan and we're expecting to finish that up by September. Any questions?
Thank you, Victoria. And you know, as Victoria shared with you, we made, I think we made some fantastic progress. We have a clear sense, certainly at the direction of our steering committee about kind of as the, the strategic growth of the areas that we should be focusing in on. And Alex and Victoria and I will all be in the community in July and on the 20th. We'll be there for several days. We would welcome an opportunity to say hello and work and meet with you. We're going to have several meetings during that, that stretch of days and are excited about being there and, and making further progress on the plan. But we're open to questions. I know that was a lot of material in a very short amount of time, but open to any questions that you have now or, or would welcome additional questions later on.
I have a question. So I saw the prior priorities classifications and their rankings. Were there eight total or were people able to just write in what they wanted?
So this is a great question. So we actually, those are the, those are the categories that we offered. And those were offered frankly, because those were the top priorities that we received after having multiple, multiple roundtables and one-on-one interviews. And these seem to be the, the collection that kind of bubbled to the surface. And I, you know, when I look at all of those, and if you would like, Victoria, if you can go back to that, that slide. We can make a strong case for a priority in, or, or a set of strategies under each one of these. But I think for us, it was really interesting to, to appreciate kind of how much people cared about individual topics. And the infrastructure investment category, and it being is outpacing every other category by a fair measure, really stood out to us. That's an area, and we've already started looking at best practices and thinking through how to address some of the infrastructure investment challenges or the opportunities that have been presented. But that, we, we try to ask these kinds of questions because it'll, it provides us some direction in terms of where we want to expand the strategy development component.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you explain placemaking for the folks in the room, what that means? It's a bit of a nebulous term if you, without the background.
Yeah, Corey, I appreciate that. And I'm actually going to ask Alex to, to provide an overview. And Alex has been our placemaking guru. So go ahead, Alex.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so in most places where we work or most places around the country, you know, they, the, the term quality of life is used. We have a great quality of life. We have great schools, we have low taxes, our, our roads are well paved and, and those kinds of things. But you know, quality of life to us tends to reinforce the values primarily of the existing residents. We, we really feel like quality of place is a, I guess, it's, it's a, it's a broader way of looking at it. And the quality of place actually take, when you think about the amenities, the qualities of, of a community takes into the things that, the values that, that somebody that's not from your community might be looking for. So I mean, as you all now know that, you know, for the last several years and, and it's been accelerated in the last couple, few years, there's been a great war for talent around the country. And that those cities, those regions that have experienced the most vibrant growth have been the ones that have been most successful in attracting others from, from outside residents. Through, that may not be coming there just for a job, they might be coming to live in the community. And so employers see that data and that's where they want to go to. So that's where the workforce is. And those communities tend to have better quality of place. So they, they, you know, they take into account, you know, what, what things, especially, especially a younger, more educated workforce are going to be looking for, what are those amenities? But we also want to think about how the, 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 what's going on in the existing community affects the existing residents. So with, you know, when things that, that we're seeing around the country is, you know, housing, housing availability, housing affordability. You know, one of the things that we also think about is childcare. What is the, are there adequate childcare options for, for local residents? Because that's a big issue right now that's affecting the ability of people to sustain in the workforce. So that's why we think about and we'll talk about quality of place.
Yeah. And the only thing I would add there is, and, and when you look at some of these themes or some of these topics, you know, when I got started doing economic development 25 years or so ago, you know, everybody immediately jumped to the thoughts about, oh yeah, economic development's about recruiting a business to a community. That's where, where all of the energy goes. And you know, today, economic development is a much wider lane than that. And it, in many ways, it's about creating a positive environment for economic investment or expansion. And that's true for not just business, but it's individuals and making sure your community is a place where people want to invest their future. So that was a very long answer to your question, but, but we wanted to provide a little bit more background. Other questions?
Out of the, the individuals that are commuting outside of the county for work, but reside here, do we know what kind of industries they're, they're working at? Is it like fisheries or aviations or something along those lines? Do we not have that data?
We, we can't get to that level in terms of the specific industries. I, I think the, the data allows us to, to look at in terms of if they're working in services, if they're working in transportation or, or just a couple of other, it only gets us about three categories. So we can't get down to the, to the, the, the level of detail of specific industry sectors. But it does, it does allow us to look at sort of education level, income level, and sort of a, a very high level in terms of industry.
So, so I'll follow up to that. Can you tell from your data whether those people are moving physically or digitally?
That's a great, that's a great question because they could be either. So the way the data is based, it's the, it's, it's if the, the employer, where, what, whatever the address of the employer is that reports the data to the federal government. So you could actually be working remotely and you're going to be showing up in the data as, as commuting. And that's a great point because I mean, as we all know, especially with, you know, remote work, how it's accelerated in the last couple of years. Many of those people that may be showing up, say, to work, commuting into Puget Sound, they may actually be working remotely. commuting into Puget Sound, they may actually be working remotely from their headquarters in Puget Sound.
Yeah. And you know, some of the data that, that's part of the reason why it's so important to make sure we're having community conversations and talking to folks on the ground. Data will, will point you in a direction. It's a very valuable tool. Sometimes we'll use a lot of as much data, as many different data points to kind of triangulate an answer. But boy, there's nothing like a local validation. And so I, I, we're, we're digging further into that topic because we know remote work is a, is something that's going to impact economies and is impacting economies everywhere. Other questions?
We had allocated about half an hour. And we're there.
Well, let me just, just put another, just to plant another seed about the, the meetings that were, the series of meetings that we're going to have around that July 20th timeframe and, and how excited we are about being there in person. Having an opportunity to speak and meet in person with leadership across the county. And would encourage as many people as possible to be involved in some of the opportunity workshop conversations that we're going to be having. And we look forward to continuing to, to work with our steering committee, but we welcome an opportunity to work with folks that have not been a part of the process as of yet.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to what they're saying. We are really, in my mind, reaching a, 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 a place that I don't think we've seen for many years in, in our county in terms of a spirit of cooperation amongst various groups. The university is pursuing a, a university center proposal for a regional economic advisory center, which is something that we have within the state and throughout the nation that's funded federally, but it is not within our area. And this, this could be talking about CW county city collaboration, a fantastic opportunity to finally leverage what is our, our greatest economic resource into something that actually turns into an economic resource for all of us. Obviously the broadband pursuit of, you know, across both the city and the county. We are, we are finding a, a lot of pieces that are coming in, in, into place. And you know, last, I think within at least speaking for this board, we have, have really put ourselves in a position, I think to be more of a, of a, of a strategic partner for many different projects out there. Right now we're working with, with Kititas on a, of their water issues, which are pretty well known. And I think that through this collaboration in this project, we have probably the greatest opportunity that we've had in decades to really make a, make a resilient difference here. So I appreciate everyone's attention this tonight and Bruce and Heidi's help on the executive team as well.
Thank you.
It's been a good pleasure. Thanks. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And I see someone with a hand raised and I just want to remind everyone, we're not taking public comment tonight.
Yes, and I think that's the chief. That's the chief from Moses Lake. He's joining us.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Sure. So that is a good segue to homelessness. So who's taking that?
So I will start us out on Justin Moore.
Thank you, everyone, once again. So I have the pleasure to give you all an update on some work that's been happening in our community in this room and outside this room really for the last few months. The genesis of this ad hoc committee was really at our last joint study session and back in, was it December? And, and the discussion was on the challenges of, and the, the gaps really present in our community on how to address homelessness. And so we established with, at that committee meeting, a joint ad hoc committee to study the issue. And so this is really to bring everyone up to speed on what we've done to date. I will tell you waiting in the wings, as I mentioned, that we actually have a guest, a guest presenter. Because we did happen to go on a field trip as part of our ad hoc committee and explore and, and share with you some of our findings from that as well. So, so just to start out, our process tonight is just to give you again, an update of the work to date. And there isn't a specific recommendation coming out of tonight's discussion. The bad hot committee has at least one more meeting, if not more. And we're hoping to come back to our council and to our commissioners with some recommendations on how to move forward. We're going to talk a little bit about, I'm going to start talking about the importance of shelters. We're sort of broken down our discussions into sort of three prongs. One has been about the facilities or structures, shelters and shelter services in our community and in the, the needs and the challenges. Also about the regulatory environment, and that's really woven into both the shelters and some of the behavioral services as well. So, so we'll, we'll break it down into kind of that process tonight. So a little bit about the membership, we've met four times since the beginning of the year. It's been a little bit challenging getting everybody in, in one room. As you all know, we've had really a wide representation from the city and the county. We've had the E P D representatives, also the sheriff's office, a number of city staff. We've had members of the faith community, our public health folks, the, the health network folks. And then merit and comprehensive and Hope Source. And we've been invited fish as well. So we've had again, broad representation to study and to talk through what the, the assets and what the challenges are in our community. So just to start out with a little bit of, you know, the importance of shelter. What we know and our discussion started out with a briefing last time around. And Terry will give us a little update on that too, with the Boise decision and the challenges of enforcing camping ordinance on public spaces. And so what we know is that we need places, shelters, drop-in shelters, options for people to go in order to, to fully enforce some camping ordinances. And, and shelters, what we've learned and discussed in our ad hoc committee have to be appropriately cited and appropriately scaled for communities. And so really, again, that does impact the ability to enforce our time, place and manner camping restrictions. And this, and what we've also learned and, and I'll share specifically, as we talk about our field trip to Moses Lake, the importance of the connection to services and the range of shelter services. And in some way, look at our community and say, what sort of shelter services do we have? We have a cold weather shelter from the month of November through March as a, a drop-in option. And we also have lots of diverse and dispersed shelter services provided by Hope Source throughout our community. And that isn't often known about. And, and so they're providing lots of different services. And there's a range of self shelter services. So I'm going to step into our field trip because I think this was a really amazing case study in what another community has done. And then after I just talked about some of the basics and show you a few photos, I'd like to offer Chief Beer, who was actually the acting city manager at the time, was just like the implement of their program to talk a little bit about his experience and the value this has brought the community. So Moses Lake has a, what they call a senior center. It's a drop-in shelter. It's been open for a couple of years and I'll ask the chief to clarify. And, and so this is actually created in an area that is adjacent to their downtown. It's a little bit more of a commercial site. And it's a model that allows a very, very clear rules about how folks enter the timing that they may enter and, and then also provides a safe location for people to be. They have security guards and lighting and it's set up in a way to provide a safe location. It's actually operated by Hope Source and through a contract. And, and what they found is that it actually has created a number of valuable opportunities for services to, to integrate with folks who need a place to stay for the evening. So it's not just a place where people can go or the police can drop folks and, and provide an opportunity for a place to stay for the evening. They are also able to help people move into services that are available into the community and move out of that path. If, as they so choose. So it's a number of, again, a number of value, valuable benefits. This is a little bit, this is what it looks like. And so these are individual sheds. They are, this is the internal. Inside it's, they are insulated. There, there is no electricity or heat in these. And so it's a limited. What we understand is it provides about 30 degrees of extra comfort again, from the elements outside. I believe the size is about 35 units. As you can see from the edge, this, it is fully fenced. And, and also they provide security at night. Again, this is for drop-in services. Then you start taking people in the evening and there's a check-in process. Once you're in, you cannot leave for the evening. So very specific rules about how you get in. And, and they do have, these are, this was an individual. They do have a few of family or for couples. So multiple sleeping areas. One of the elements that, that we found too was fascinating. Folks who are not, who are experiencing homelessness often are carrying their belongings with them. And what this site also provided was a space where people could safely store their belongings. And so they had these bins. And they actually had locks on the bins. And so people could bring their things to, to the facility and they'd lock them at night. They could also, if they had a job interview or they had work or something, they had a safe place to store their belongings during the day as well. So again, that people were not allowed in the facility during the day, but they could store their belongings in that facility. So it created that extra sense of safety. And I guess what I didn't tap on in, in the beginning is they are following what they call a, a housing first model essentially. And so the model that they were looking at is everybody needs a place to stay there to get their basic needs met before they can actually work on the challenges that, that probably got them to experiencing homelessness. And so that's really step one of this, the shelter program is providing basic shelter in that way that helping people that are ready to step out into something new. This provided a wonderful transition to tap into other resources and programs in the community. So one of the reasons I have this here, the person, and this was Noki, he's a Hope Source employee. People make all of the difference. And Noki told us a little bit of his story and just an amazing human being who connects very well with the people who are staying in this, in this drop-in site. And is very clear about boundaries and is also has the heart of helping people move to a better life when they're ready. So sort of the tough love model. And again, just back to the people make all the difference. A couple of other facilities on site. So they had a trailer set up that, that was the entry point. And that was the opposite. You saw them have to be standing in. They had a very, again, very specific process for check-in. They also had a separate trailer set up with showers and restrooms. And so and again, men's and women's door and again, safe and secure place where people could clean and you know, dress for the, the work, work the next day or. So one of the things, just a few stats, I think after our, I know we shared this council, I'm not sure if the county commissioners got these as well. Hope Source actually provided, the city provided an overview of the sleep center demographics. And these were pulled from there. One of the things that we had asked was, do you find that you have people from outside your county that are, that are staying here? They said, basically everyone that's been here actually lives here in our county, is from our county here. And so, if, if you know, one of the, one of the concerns of some folks, it's maybe we call it the magnet theory. If you build facilities that people will come from all over again. And you know, we know there are some folks who, who, if it's a transitory, there can be a transitory element of people travel. But oftentimes they travel to places where they know people and, and, and often when they have family as well. So those are some pretty interesting statistics. So, and before we go into the regulatory environment, I was going to see if Miss in Chief Beer is available. And I thought we'd offer an opportunity for Chief Beer to talk. And then if you have questions, so he doesn't have to stick around. It was generous enough to join us for these things. So I'm going to close the presentation. And Chief, do you have a camera on and are you ready for us?
I have a camera on and I've got, I'm unmuted now.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Okay, I, I, I'll give you a high level view. We started our program. We started delving into our program back in about 2017, 2018. We saw the need for services for homeless. We had a, a warming center in the wintertime with a volunteer group. But it just didn't serve the needs. I mean, it helped in the wintertime, but it didn't serve the, the needs year round. So we did the same thing you guys did and we took a, a trip down to Walla Walla and looked at their model down there. Looked at their sheds and how they were interacting with their homeless population and how, what services they were providing. And we decided to basically emulate what they had. We looked at those types of shelters. We realized that they were kind of spendy. And so what we decided to do is, is we decided to contact a few shed companies. And we have a Ziggy's in town. And so we worked with Ziggy's to build these little like eight by eight huts. Put a little porch on the front, put a, a man door in the front with a window that would open to, for ventilation. And then we had a group that came in. We purchased the insulation sheet rock or plywood and had volunteers come in and insulate these things. So we started looking at properties within the city that the city owned. And we found a location of some vacant property that the city owns that is adjacent to a residential area. And it was close to the services that our homeless population uses. They, they frequent the Wal, the Walmart area, the Winco area, the north end of our community where there's a lot of areas for them to be able to panhandle and, and get services and food and stuff like that. So we wanted to stay in that general location. The council voted, and this is back in 2019, the council voted to move forward with putting the sleep center at this location in this residential area. And they voted six to one to move the sleep center to this location, to that, to that location. By the time the next council meeting came, the community was completely up in arms with the location. They didn't want it in that neighborhood. It was within about a quarter of a mile to a school. And needless to say, by the next meeting, it was unanimous not to use that location. So then we had to, we had to go back to the drawing board and try to find some location to use. We had, had looked at this location that we're currently at. It had an old dilapidated building on it. And it was, was not owned by the city. So we worked with the property owner to lease the land. They removed the building, leveled the property out, put gravel down, put a fence around it and leased it to the city. As was mentioned, it, it's in a commercial area, right on the edge of town. It's just down the highway from the Walmart Winco area. And it's, it's close to some areas where homeless were living on private property. The sleep center started in 2020. We had a, at the time, we had a homeless population with our last point in time count of about 60 plus folks within Moses Lake. That's not all of Grant County, but just within the city. When, when I was in that interim city manager role, I looked at the, the numbers and said about a third of the homeless or chronically homeless would use the shelter. So we originally started with about 20 shelters. When COVID hit in 2020, we obviously received some ARPA funding. And the city decided to increase that number to 30. When COVID hit in twenty twenty, we obviously received some ARPA funding and the city decided to increase that number to thirty-five. And that's what we have now. We've got the thirty-five units in there. Obviously, the shower facilities, bathroom facilities are huge. And I guess I should go back a little bit too. When the Boise decision hit, we, the, our homeless population learned of the Boise decision. The day that the the decision came out. And within two or three days, we had roughly fifty to sixty homeless living in the parks around the city. There were at one time over twenty homeless tents in the Civic Center Park directly behind the police department. And City Hall, right next to our library. And during that time, they were using bathroom facilities in the park. And when I say that, they were not using actual bathroom facilities. They were using trees on the side of the building to 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 use bathroom facilities. And so it became a health safety issue. For a short period of time, we moved some porta-potties out in those areas. At least they had bathroom facilities, but keep in mind, this is wintertime. And so we knew that we needed to act quickly. And that's when we got to work on this location and got to work on the the shelters and and got everything in place. In twenty twenty, we tightened up our camping ordinances. And so we don't allow any camping on public property. With the Boise decision, this gave us the space to be able to force people off of public property. And either into the shelter or to property that wasn't public. So a lot of them moved on to private property. They found state property to 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 camp on until the state kicked them off. And so it gave us the opportunity to 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 force them off of city property and into a shelter. As, again, as was mentioned, i- it helps the law enforcement side. It helps the the public safety side, the the health, community health side with, obviously them not in in public with the the urinating, defecating and and the other stuff that goes with that. But I'll tell you, the one nice thing is, is we hopes, we partnered with Hope Source on this. And last year, again, with some ARPA funding and with our partnership with Hope Source. We were able to partner and purchase a, an old motel in the city. I believe the motel has twenty-some rooms in it. We turned that into a kind of a transitional housing area. So they start in the sleep center, kind of trying to put their life back in order. We have services there that show up every day, gives them an opportunity for mental health counseling, substance abuse counseling. Will help them, you know, with with employment, whatever their needs might be, they have the services there available. And they then can transition into the old El Rancho motel, which is now this transitional housing. And so we have seen people, quite a few success stories where people start in the sheds. And then they transition into a more transitional or some permanent housing. And they're they're starting to put their lives back together. And so it's 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 a win-win all the way around. And we, despite the fact that even moving to this commercial property, we were going to have, and we had some some pushback from the business owners in that area. There have not been, we we've had some some issues, some some calls to those businesses. But not to the extent that they that they thought would happen. And so it's been, it started to be a rough go, but it it has turned out to be really rewarding. It's, again, we've seen some some great outcomes with our with our homeless population. I will tell you that you will never get a hundred percent of your chronically homeless to use this. I stick with, you're gonna see thirty to forty percent. So you will continue to have sixty percent or so that will stay homeless, chronically homeless and will refuse to use the center. But those that use it and take advantage of the resources have seen great success. And I'll leave it at that if anybody asks questions.
So you said you have thirty-five units. What happens when demand outstrips supply?
So we're we're not even close. We're averaging about twenty to twenty-five a night. What Walla Walla did is, because obviously if you don't have a place for them to go, then you can't force them off of public property. What Walla Walla did is they actually brought in an old army, one of those big army tents. And put a whole bunch of cots in there and that was their overflow area. And so if all of the the shelters were being used, they could move them into that large shelter, give them a cot. And still get them off the streets and off public right-of-ways. And so we we haven't had a need for that yet, because like I said, we're averaging between twenty and twenty-five. So so we've got ten plus sheds that sit vacant every night.
On the graph that we saw, there were about four thousand and change bed nights. And then it had some demographics below that in terms of, it said like veterans thirty-two and and five hundred and fifty, I think, for Grant County residents. And what I heard was that the users have been Grant County residents, because the bed nights didn't, obviously didn't total up to what was below. And I'm guessing it went from bed nights in aggregated to down to the individual residents that by category. So but is it, it's been all Grant County residents?
The vast majority. It's not, it's not all Grant County residents. Of our chronically homeless, we're, we're, I think, in the eighty to ninety percent range of our chronically homeless are Grant County residents. They 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 grew up in this county, not necessarily in Moses Lake, but in Grant County area. They grew up here, their family is here, this is, this is their home. We do end up with folks that come in off the highway, because obviously we're right off I ninety. That will get displaced off the Greyhound bus, will hitchhike and get get dumped in Moses Lake. Well, their car may break down in Moses Lake. They may use the shelter for a night or two, but they generally find a way to get the resources they need to continue their journey. We all, the police department has some funding to help folks with gas, you know, a bus ticket if they get stranded here. You know, whatever they need to get to wherever they're headed to. And so we will also offer those resources if somebody, again, if somebody breaks down. I I'll give you an example, you know, we've we fill tanks up of cars a lot. We've had somebody blow out a couple of tires and they didn't have the money to buy tires, so we bought them a couple of tires. Just to help things get on the road to where they're headed to. So I think that five hundred and fifty were unique guests. But I, I I could be wrong with that. But the, I mean, there, there are the unique numbers and then there are the bed count numbers, because obviously a lot of them come back each night.
So you said it's thirty to forty percent of the chronically homeless are using it and the other ones aren't. You're not getting them in there. What's your enforcement strategy with those folks?
So they're on, but they are on, but they, can you hear me still? I'm losing my battery a little bit, I'll plug it in. They are, in most cases, on public, or excuse me, on private property. We work with and our code enforcement works with private property owners to to get them moved. Sometimes it's a challenge with our private property owners to wants to get involved. And so a lot of times they'll let them stay there as long as they're not causing a problem. And so if they're on private property, we we take a pretty much a hands-off approach. Code enforcement, if they start to see garbage buildup or, you know, problems like that. Then code enforcement will step in and and contact the property owner and and will get them moved. So it hasn't been a huge problem for us. Unfortunately, though, those that stay chronically homeless and refuse to use the sleep center are the ones that we seem to be displacing quite a bit. We'll move them from one place to the next. The one issue, the one, I think the biggest issue we've seen lately is, it has to do with motorhomes, cars, travel trailers, things like that. That are moving in more and more. And with some recent decisions out of West, out of the West Side. Moving those are more problematic for us now than than our homeless, our unsheltered homeless population.
And the last question I have, what's your interaction been with the county in terms of the administration of the of the dollars that come out of your recording fees?
So that's, that, we didn't start accepting the money from the county or taking that recording fee dollar until early two thousand twenty. I think it's been, now that we've got it, I think it's been easy to get. When we first applied for that money, there were two other, we had New Hope and the county Grant County, oh geez, what is it, the Housing Authority, that were taking those dollars. And so we took our portion out. It did cause some issues. We had, and I think we still kind of struggle with some relationships with some of those organizations, because they felt that we were taking money from them. And I I know initially it caused some issues with the county. I think those are, the relationship is getting better, but it's only been two years. And so there's still some pretty, pretty open wounds when it comes to that money.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us and for providing your perspective here.
Absolutely. And if if anybody has any questions, you can reach me easily by email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, so I'm gonna reshare our screen here. And Terry, do you want to talk a little bit about enforcement or Chief talks?
Yeah, the chief sort of stole my thunder, which is fine. You know, I think we reviewed the Martin versus Boise case when we were together last fall. I know we have a couple of new people, but you know, in essence, it's a pretty simple formula. It's a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case, it's a federal case that applies to Washington and other western states. And the formula, as the chief sort of indicated, is that for every shelter bed you make available, that's a person you can take off of public property. Sleeping or occupying the right-of-way or parks or library grounds. And that's, that's really the, sort of the import of of Martin case. There's been a couple of district, federal district court decisions since then, so they're they're below the Court of Appeals. And they they implemented what the Court of Appeals said. They've been pretty strict about interpreting the the decision from Martin and have struck down regulations in a couple of cities or counties, one was down in Southern Oregon, Josie County. The other one was, I think, Los Angeles. So Martin is the law of the land right now here. So that, again, points back to the importance of being able to provide overnight shelters in exchange for being able to to move people off of the public properties. The other issue, I'll just briefly touch on, the chief mentioned is, is the prevalence in some cities and growing prevalence of RVs and motorhomes. And his reference to the shit from the West Side is the Washington Supreme Court decision and Seattle versus Law from from last year. And that was a case, I don't want to get too deep into the recent facts, but it's basically someone had their vehicle towed from the downtown Seattle area and it was impounded and that person claimed that it was their place of abode where they were living. It raised a couple of issues that the Supreme Court addressed. One was whether a vehicle could, owner could claim a homestead exemption. The reason this came up is because they impounded the vehicle and there's always the possibility if you don't pay your empowerment fees and then other fines that they apply. That that vehicle may be sold at auction. So I don't, if you're not familiar with the homestead exemption, if you own a home, it is a certain amount of it up to certain values exempt from creditors. If they're going to either foreclose on you or try to collect their debt. The same applies to vehicles and that was clear before this decision. But this decision reinforced that it does apply to vehicles being used for someone to vote. The second issue, which I think actually more challenging, is that the defendant in that case raised the the excessive fines to defense. It's an Eighth Amendment of the Federal Constitution that you can't have fines in excess of the crime in essence. And in this case, the argument was that the penalties that were imposed for the parking violations. Which, you know, Seattle had a twenty-four hour parking code that was violated. And the question was whether the fines that were ultimately imposed were excessive compared to what the violation was. And ultimately, the Supreme Court said that it requires an individualized analysis for if it is challenged, so that the judge would have to look at what's the person's ability to pay versus what the violation is. In this particular case with Mr. Law, the the court noted that he wasn't, he wasn't parked in a residential area. So that was a factor sort of in his favor, so to speak. And that it wasn't a particularly egregious violation in terms of it was overtime parking. And so it held that it could be a violation of his Eighth Amendment, right? So where that leaves, you know, I'll just speak for the city, is that we're very cautious about impaling RVs and motorhomes. Number one, it's hard to find a place to get the tow that has a practical matter. But then the empowerment fees and other fines and penalties for parking violations are gonna require some analysis as to, you know, if a judge is gonna impose it. It's the same rule that now applies to all many cases. You've probably heard of the legal financial obligations that defendants have when they're found guilty or plead guilty to a crime. The judge has to go undergo or undertake an individualized analysis of that person's ability to pay for setting the criminal penalties up. That they have to, they have to pay. So those are some of the challenges that, you know, cities and counties are are facing now with these, with these two decisions.
Go ahead.
So clarifying our ability to move, let's just, there are six vehicles on Water Street. We would have the capacity of the rule to move that. But the challenge would be if we move them to where there's impound fees and and escalating fines or whatever that. That would be the challenge, more so than our capacity to enforce our, you can't park for twenty-four hours.
Right. And the court was clear, the Supreme Court was clear that jurisdictions have the ability to enforce those, those parking restrictions. But the challenge is what happens once they're enforced.
But that, that's a different question for us to address, other, rather than can you move somebody who has, in essence, set up residence on the street?
Right.
What is our current practice? If, or have we had that?
Well, we've had it come up a couple of times and Chief Wade may want to weigh in on this. But I think in one case, we we moved it to storage and I don't think we've been charging empowerment fees. Yeah. So and I don't know if any of those vehicles have been claimed yet. So they're still there. And so we haven't had to face, you know, for that decision. If the person comes in and says, well, I want my motorhome back. And then what are we gonna do about those fines and penalties? But I think the key is, you know, just getting them off the street. And then, you know, if the person wants to claim their motorhome or vehicle, then we'll try to work with them. So we don't wind up in the same place where they parked up the streets, in the residential areas certainly.
I mean, relative to the city and the county, I mean, I think it's an important distinction that I'm hearing as we're going through this. Is is we've got to recognize, we're not going to be able to manage or control private property. But the only, the only conversation that we have per view of, the only, is 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 public property. Whether it's non-designated park, but city-owned property or county-owned property, you know, or or in this case, the streets.
However, I would imagine, and I didn't want to ask him this, we have our own law enforcement here. Is, it would be my assumption, or, you know, I would think that that property owner still has their rights. So if they had no trespassing science, the person could be trespassed and could take that out.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We we have that, you know, we get through law enforcement. We do code enforcement complaints about people camped on private property. Not, not often, but it it does occur. You know, we had a problem out behind Fred Meyer for a number of years. Fred Meyer finally sort of got the city involved and we got, and Hope Source was already aware of it. We were together to get that person moved, so private property owners always have that right.
But they need to initiate.
Unless it becomes a code.
Great. And I will just add from an outside perspective. Our, our chief, I know he's been hosting sort of opportunities to learn from each other. Opportunities to learn from each other across law enforcement jurisdictions. And so I was actually able to sit in on a. On a session where they talked about, you know, one, the challenges with camping on public property in the process that, that we take. In Ellensburg and shared that with all of the, the other jurisdictions in the county too. So there's, there's some cooperativeness going on. Within our county with these, with these issues and, and talking through how we are seeing RVs in our county as well. So I know our goal has been to talk about, you know, updating laws. There we go. So the other pieces that we talked about were the behavioral health services and, I don't know, Terry, if you want to talk about the behavioral health board.
Yeah, just briefly, this is actually a new level of court choices in the county that the, the county has. Taken the lead on putting together and getting implemented. It, it started with a bunch of planning meetings and makes now in full swing. I checked today. So this is a court that has two tracks for people who are in the criminal justice system that. After either, anybody can suggest that the defendant. Be considered for behavioral health courts of the country, defense attorneys, county prosecutor, city prosecutor. Sometimes it could come to probation services. And then there is a track for mental health services and a track for substance use disorder services. And obviously there's overlap there with some of the people that are in the program. So it goes, there's a screening process. Once the person's admitted. Then there's a series of evaluations they have to go and they have to comply with the treatment recommendations of providers. They try to get them into housing. And there's a bunch of partners that are working together as part of this team. It involves Judge Sander from the lower district court and Judge Ellis from the upper district court. There is a compliance specialist and that's Emily Brown. She's, she's with the court system probation services. And then Hope Source is involved, Merit Resource Services is comprehensive. And then. We also have law enforcement from both agencies as well as. The defense attorneys are involved to a certain extent. So. So far, there are two people that are going through the program. I mean, just starting out, it's, it's, it's up and down. And then I think there's an applicant that is being considered today. And the idea is to obviously sort of. For people who are repeatedly going through the, you know, the justice system that have these issues. Who for whatever reason have access services or haven't been able to access services, this is a way to try it. And get them those services and move them out of the criminal justice system. Which, you know, the repeat offenders for relatively minor crimes, violent crimes, it's, it's, it's a tremendous burden. Of the system. And so we could get them into this other assortment of services. You know, move them out of the criminal justice system. So there's a, there's a characteristic approach to it.
And how this connects to people experiencing homelessness is oftentimes there's an intersection with the legal system. So, so this is again another pathway and it's part of a really good ecosystem that we're, we're looking at. So we'll talk a little bit about comprehensive provided and update at our last meeting. And I just pulled a few highlights from their presentation. And, you know, they provide, begin their regional providers, so they serve several counties in central Washington. They have inpatient services, they have residential services, they have outpatient services. And serve both children and adults. Their, their primary group is adults in the population services. And let's see here, and again, their primary. Access to, from their services really has been through the healthcare system. And one of the things they talked about was there is a significant lack in beds, crisis beds available. And I think Councilmember Elliott had shared that KDH actually had a 54 day. Stay in their emergency room because they couldn't find a bed placement for someone. So. We know that there's a lack of healthcare or of access to behavioral health services in our community. And so that was a pretty glaring example. Of that. And, and so. So we know that, you know, as we look at the ecosystem, there are some gaps in our system and we know that that's one of them. So they use a coordinated crisis care response and they talked, they shared with us how that works. They also do, as Terry mentioned, that they're part of the behavioral health court system. And really trying to help treat and divert and help people move, move into recovery. In, in the aspects of their life. And then the other participant, and I believe you all received a PDF in your inbox today on Merit Resources dropped off. Some programs, they haven't been able to join us in person much, but wanted to share, they're really part of this system as well. They provide a navigator, computer navigators and really have focused on the access to substance abuse. Or substance use disorder treatment. And again, had very much been a partner in that court diversion program as well.
Yeah, just quickly on the navigator, I think it's important, I know Brett you sent in on the last meeting, I think that they have. And CPB and I have been a part of participating in that conversation. But, but I think that the key with the navigator is that there, there needs to be the criteria around substance abuse. But I think when we're talking about unsheltered homeless folks, there, there are really minimal. Barriers to entry to the navigator. Navigator really is just that. Somebody that EPB is working with or connects with a navigator that's hired through Merit. And that navigator helps them establish eligibility for behavioral health services for substance abuse. Or all of those other elements that may have been significant barriers for them getting to the point at which they need assistance. They wouldn't, significant barriers to them receiving the assistance before because simply they're not in a position. To work through a bureaucratic maze to get to the level of, of, of support that's required. It's really, from my perspective, having, you know, peripherally worked in the field with it. This one is probably as close as we've had to someone who. Can immediately be there and support an individual who's homeless or unsheltered. To begin to access the level of support that's required to hopefully get them to track separately differently. It, it is really very different and comprehensive. But so I think it's just, I think it's, I mean, again, and Merit is focused more on, on substance abuse or substances. But, but I think it's, it's just important to recognize that I think it's going to be a critical piece along therapeutic court. Some of the other elements that are coming in line here in supporting people differently. And it is a county-wide program.
And Hope Source provided us with an overview of just the point of time census. And I'm assuming there's probably different information that's. You don't think this is separated by housed and unhoused? I think. Okay, yeah, so we can write some numbers. In overall numbers, it looks, you know, it looks like we're in similar ranges or. Let's see here. So 2022 numbers are a little bit down compared to 2021 numbers. So we can provide some additional information. And again, we haven't, this, we just got these. So I'm, I'm not familiar with deeper at the numbers as well. One of the things I wanted to touch on, and this hasn't been something we've been focusing on in the ad hoc, but I always think it's important to talk about when we're talking about services. It's like the funding options. And so, yes, it's, Fisher Wright talked about, you know, the county recording fees. Chief here, that's, you know. So one source that a lot of communities are using are the recording fees. And so, and just to remember that right now, we do, I think the last contract was with. Hope Source for cold weather shelters. So for the 2021, 2022 season was about $80,000. And I believe those are funded out of the counties. And, you know, the city does have an affordable housing sales tax using that for specific. You know, shelter, I mean, it has some restrictions. We have to follow the RCW, but as we think about that sort of range of services to people. That's certainly a funding opportunity. House Bill 1406, which both the city and county have. Again, generally as for affordable housing services, but there's some products to help support. REIT 2 was also something that there's a caveat in the state law that provides an opportunity until January of 2026 for. For a broader use for, and it talks about people experiencing homelessness in affordable housing specials. And so, so, you know, something to potentially explore for some turn funding as well. And I know they found this to give their house sales tax. I'm sure that, I, I think we see from some of the numbers and some of the things we've learned. There's a need for additional services. And so, so that funding will be important as we.
So, hey, do, do we know how much the Moses Lake model costs?
So if I recall, so operationally, they spent about $15,000 a month, they said. For all of the services for security and for their, their lease. That's all combined.
And it's a 12-month.
It's a 12-month program. And then I believe it was in the. Like 350,000 ish range to set up the facility. So there was that, that early investment. And so I can get those numbers specifically, but I recall from our.
Do we have an estimate? So using his 30 to 40%. How many, how many?
So, and this is what we know, just at least anecdotally, and we need to talk with Hope Source to get specific numbers. With, with a cold weather shelter beds. I think sort of the high number, and I'm looking at one of the volunteers. Was, I think it was under, under 20 was the highest for our local shelter use during the winter. And I think it was more in the range of 14 and 15 per night. For that, okay, so the point in time census is unsheltered 22 for countywide.
Yes, and that's the highest number of the location.
So I would say, I think one of the most impactful things we did, and I think there were nine of us, 10 of us. That went to Moses Lake is to look at what they did and, right, they think chief, the chief. It was, it was, they've done a lot of things and they're actually working on sort of their base too. They're, they're going to be moving away from that shelter. They've dropped in shelter there and they're actually trying to put things onto one campus. And so we've learned that people. That the people that have entered their service system that have escalated into their enhanced shelter, they've had 100% success. Of those people that started in the shelter and have moved on to moving down into the system where they become. More, again, more sufficient. So, so if people who enter their shelter services from others have not had that same degree of success. And so, and so there, there were lots of positives. And I think my mind, one personal takeaway was. That, you know, the shelter is important, but the servant connection to services is really, that it's what makes the difference.
I mean, the other takeaway for me was the impact on community. So when we drove, arrived. It wasn't, there wasn't like a whole bunch of junk laying around or anything like that. It looked kind of like what you would see on the way in and out of town where people are currently selling. Storage units. It had that look about it. So there wasn't. It just, there wasn't an accumulation of things. There was, it was very organized and. For people that did stay, there was a very, you had X amount of space. You weren't allowed to have stuff hanging out of it or sitting around it. If I'll have it fit in that one spot.
So that's all we have. And I guess one more thing I would add is that, you know, there, there is some urgency into. My understanding is we need to find, our community needs to find another location for the cold weather shelter. I think the church that was housing it this, this last year would like to move away from doing that. So it was approached by Hope Source saying, what other options do we have? So, so that, that discussion is something we'll need to, on this, as well. More questions?
Well, it just appears we're sort of somewhat hamstrung in terms of. Actually moving folks out of public spaces until something like this is in place.
And is there general consensus of trying to pursue this model?
There needs to be some, something in place that provides enforcement agencies the avenue to tell folks, you can be here, you can be there, but you can't be. Right here in the park. And there needs to be, in my mind, for there to be some sort of, of the discussion between the city and the county that, you know, an agreed, an agreed level of enforcement. Right? I mean, we shouldn't be expecting different departments to do different things. There should be an expected reaction amongst. Any person who chooses to use public property in the county or the city that you will be treated consistently. Across all enforcement agencies. And I think it's important for us to be very explicit about that, where we do have some sort of a partnership about what the expected product would be.
I, I think we, the city may need to update some of its ordinances because I, I think we have no camping in some parks, but not.
We actually have.
Library grounds.
I would just add, we have an ordinance that's ready to go, but we were watching and listening to Moses Lake. And, and they, they, they strengthened their ordinance at the same time they opened up their services.
Yeah, I think, Nancy, to your point, we have another meeting scheduled for the afternoon. And the conversation that Laura and I had touched on was hopefully, hopefully having a recommendation coming from the ad hoc then. Back to our respective bodies. It, it feels like we're landing somewhere around this model. I, I think that. The, some of the conversations that will need to occur. Will be how, how does the countywide, how does that consistency land? And how do we offer capacity in both lower and upper county? So, so my, I would hope. Coming to conclusion, a recommendation, meeting on the 30th. We would have it back in front of council on the second meeting of July. Or review or possibly a study session. I would assume it probably could be a similar timing event. And through those roles, you know, what, what resources do we have? What are our constraints around our ICW? There's, there are things we've got to attend to. You know, to your point, when, when you funded the nights in, the five. The five people who are homeless needed to be part of that mix, which is not part of our constraint. So, so I think we need to, we need to look at our funding mechanism to see what flexibility we have.
I have a question on the regulatory thing. Because of the Boise settlement. We get to, we get a facility in place that can handle people who are camping in the parks. And we can get them off their public land. But if they don't want to go. And there's no other place for, there's no private property for them to go to. What happens then? If I'm a police officer and I happen upon a homeless person. And I offer them a chance to go to the shelter. And their own public property and they, they can't, they don't want to go to the shelter. They can get off the property. Is that? They just walk up and down the streets or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually.
So there's nothing beyond that that says, okay, so they. There's, they're not being arrested for anything. It's not a lawyer in charge or anything like that. They're just. Offering the opportunity to be safe and warm.
They can't camp on the public property.
And I think when we talked, when the chief presented in Moses Lake, he talked about that. It's either, it, it isn't either or in a way. You know, you cannot be here. You know, we can offer you this. And he talked about actually. And he talked about actually the ability at two o'clock in the morning to to connect and still have someone end up at the sleep center if they would choose to go and and mostly PD transport.
Yeah. Are we ready to move to our next topic? The interlocal green business. And and Dan stepped up to the table, so I'm assuming you're.
Yeah, I can give an update. It'll be brief because we really are just getting started on the code work to implement the the I L A. The, that agreement included code amendments that needed to be made. Kiddass County Code to implement that. We, and those had to be done by the end of the year. Our, we lost our long range planner in January, trying to recruit that position, but haven't been able to fill it. So we entered into a contract with L B C Inc., which is a planning firm, Clay White, I think some of the city staff are familiar with, to do that work. We have just gotten started with that. We are expecting an outline of of everything that's going to be in our code update within about a week. That outline is going to come with some, there's some questions I think that we're going to have to meet the city staff to make sure that we're, you know, our approach to updating the code is is true to the intent and the agreement. So we'll have to do that. I think once we have those questions answered, that then the drafting of the code will go through very quickly. So we are planning right now, kind of tentatively, that we would introduce this to our planning commission in September. And the public hearing would be in October for the planning commission and that will go on to the board. So we are on schedule to have that at the end of the year.
Is there any report from the city?
Really, the actions have been at the at the county level for moving forward with adopting some new code. And so my understanding is we've got to need some improved communications. I think we can continue to to work on that, too, and make sure that everybody's getting notices and in a timely manner. And so, no, it's been, it's been a positive.
This actually has kicked off clearly that asked us as well for a interview regarding their, their, as well. So it's been a positive development. Getting your plan out a little better is spreading. You're welcome for the, what's that? You're welcome for the adequate. It's necessary.
Well, item four on the agenda is commissioner council member updates. Is anyone having to update?
From the conference of governments, I'll just say that our funding strategy this last year was to do an abbreviated round of funding within anticipation of, if I should have mentioned, sorry, the findings of the TIP study would then be used to help spur whatever projects would move forward with an additional round of funding or with additional funding in place to help get those off. And after sitting through a community economic revitalization board presentation a couple days ago, it was shocking to me that Kiddass County has probably the lowest over forty year, of the forty years occurred, submission out of that allocation, eight hundred and forty thousand, and other counties have upwards of fifteen million dollars. So we're putting strategies into into place and I would like to see personally you using, using these these cog lines for more leveraged approaches instead of simply just, here you go, go do a project, go out and aggregate your funding and use cog, I think, in a much more leveraged manner to to make those dollars stretch as as far as we can. So that'll be a discussion with our future discussion at the conference governments.
And I'll just refer, the utility advisory commission, the city just reviewed the telecommunications, the broadband mapping strategy that will come to council to accept, but is essentially the recommendation is to kind of keep doing what we're doing and using our excess capacity and looking for partners where where we can and and leveraging our our existing investment in in our fiber to extend it. Always open to partnering with the county.
Absolutely.
See, it's really interesting with the way they, I guess, they set it up with access, accessibility numbers, county can qualify for a lot of the veteran dollars that are coming down from the, for the broadband thing, but the city can't. But the city can partner with the county to get at some of those dollars, so.
So our strategy at this point in just development is to try to find a little bias P to build a, and it's still, it's still under discussion, but to build a system that would be funded potentially by these dollars, by these grand dollars, but this would not be an exclusive county provider. So what happens out there can be used in the levers, what happens inside the county, but we're not trying to find someone from outside, a new new player that's going to start over. It would be someone we already know, may not love, but we want, we want to love them. And I think in this process, maybe there's a, there's a good opportunity to form that partnership that pushes the dollars out there, but ultimately also builds out the system in here. But that's yet, like, as I said, under discussion yet to come. But it is not lost on the need for the city as well to thrive.
Hey, Nancy.
Yes, Rich.
So just kind of to tie a couple of the the subjects that we've been talking about, I know you guys were talking about the funding for homelessness. One of the, you know, potential suggestions that, you know, may eventually come before the county commissioners is to create and establish sort of a low, a low acuity behavioral mental health holding facility inside the county to avoid some of the issues that that we've been dealing with, with, you know, extended stays and emergency department and sort of kicking people around the community without real answers. Again, this is not, you know, a proposal, you know, just by me mentioning it, but it is something that in the behavioral and mental health community, we're starting to talk about, you know, what does that look like? And, you know, how can we establish that capability inside the community at a low enough level that it doesn't require super expensive staffing, but at a high enough level that we're not transferring people out to Idaho for these types of services?
Thank you. If there's nothing further, we can adjourn.
Well, I just, before we do, let's, let's do a group hug.
You stay on that side.
But I'm sitting next to, but but I mean, I think we need to recognize that this was a dialogue this evening, and I really appreciate the willingness to pull these joint meetings together. I mean, I think six months than that, you know, is is healthy, hopefully it's working. But on each one of the topics this evening, there was an expanded conversation that we might not have had with all of us that hopefully are, as we come, take, step away from the table as part of our conversation moving forward and how we're working together to make it better both within the city and within the county. And so I really want to recognize that and and appreciate it. And so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, good point. We we need to celebrate our relationship building.
So on that note, if you, we could keep Councilmember Elliott on the screen and we could do a group photo rather than a group hug after you adjourn.
So stay on the screen, Rich.
Your whole head on this.
Right.